We all set to begin? I'd like to call the meeting to a close, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to take the roll call, please. Mrs. Dyke?
Here.
Mr. Petrowski?
Present.
Ms. Geier?
Here.
Mrs. Bells?
Here.
Mrs. Shumway here.
I haven't done that before.
I didn't know. Sorry, I didn't know what I was doing. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So as the Chairperson pro tem, it's my pleasure to introduce and request nominations for the position of Chairperson pursuant to School Board Policy BDE.
I nominate Virginia Geier for Chairperson.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. Please vote for Chairperson Geier by raising your hand. The votes are unanimous. Thank you very much. Do you want your name back? I didn't know what I had.
I'll make one for you. Todd will make one for me.
Nominations are now open for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Kristen Shumway as Vice Chair for School Committee.
Second. Any more nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. Happy 2020 to you all. I hope it's begun well. My appointments to the following committees are as follows. I will do Policy and the Safety Committee. Negotiations will be handled by Kristen and Joe. Policy Committees will be handled by Susan and me. The Finance Committee, we do the Finance Committee differently than every other school system in the world, I think. Does the School Board care to continue to do it in this way where we rotate around who does the warrants, but all of us are interested in being involved in the budget? Yes, so we'll continue this way? So Janet and Susan, I think, will take over the warrants pretty soon. I will help out with them for a while. And then I will do the Safety Committee. The Catchy Committee is ad hoc and it's as people can attend. I'd like to welcome Susan Bells, our brand-new school committee member. And she's just very excited. She was so excited that she came at 5:00 tonight. All ready for that Policy Committee meeting. And I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Petrowski for, again, running and winning and being with us. I don't know how many terms you've shared with the Town of Winthrop with our school district. Do you recall what one you're in?
I believe I was elected in 2007. But it could have been '03.
So this could be, like, your fifth or sixth term?
If you'd like to run for my term, just let me know.
Unless you want to run for mine. But thank you.
Thank you.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, those items will be covered under my report.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 4, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the workshop meeting December 9.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of workshop meeting December 18, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Superintendent Report, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I do have a couple of items. The first is, at your place is a copy of a letter that went to the staff today. And this is an event that will be taking place March 20. This is the first time that the entire Winthrop School District staff will participate. The event is called Rendezvous, and it's put on through the Western Maine Educational Collaborative, which is a collaborative that we belong to. We will be sending all of our staff, including teachers, ed techs, nurses, and administrators. And they participate in, if I might, it's held at the University of Maine at Farmington. The event draws over 1,600 educators from the state of Maine. And they select from among a whole list of sessions that are put on by their colleagues, including colleagues from Winthrop this year. We have five individuals who are going to present from our ranks. And we're very, very pleased that they've been recognized to do that. I would like the school committee to be aware of that. We will be busing the staff from Winthrop High School via Winthrop's charter coach that morning and then busing back. People can drive, but parking is very, very limited. So we've encouraged everybody to take the bus. So that's an FYI for you. We think it's a really outstanding professional development opportunity, and we're very much looking forward to that. The second item on my list for you is also at your place or in your packet, I believe. This is the agenda for the community meeting, Community Forum with CHA. Kind of looking to have this.
Yes.
I thought so. Okay, thank you. We need just a slight change. We are moving from a potluck to a spaghetti dinner. After talking with CHA and the administrators, we think that this would be a greater drop to bring the community out. It will be in the cafeteria of the grade school. And we'll start with the dinner, which will be put on by us and our school nutrition program. So where is Erin? Erin, thank you very much. She sent me the menu the other day. Looks really good. It is free to the public, so for any of you who might be watching at home, please come out, bring your families. We will begin with the program, about six opening remarks from me, and I'll introduce the architects who are there. And then we're going to talk about some community brainstorming. They'll want to know what are the positive qualities of the Winthrop school facilities? What are some of the challenges that we see? And among the challenges that are identified, what are the biggest ones that we see facing our facilities and our fields in the next five to 10 years? After that, the architects have prepared a slideshow. They've been here twice, and they've looked at all the schools, all the facilities, and they'd like to share with the audience, with the school committee, who will be there as well, some of the things that they've found. And then they would also like to share with us, they do a lot of work in Maine, what they consider to be some model schools. So as we think about the future of the Winthrop facilities and what we want them to look like, they'll share with you some exemplars from around the state. And then the meeting will wrap up about 7:00. So it'll be about an hour and a half. They will be back again in April and for a second community dialogue to share again their work, which their work product we expect to be done for the school committee meeting, the second meeting in April. So we're, some of those dates are a little less firm right now, but in your calendars, we'll get this out to you. We will have a follow-up from them again in April.
It's very exciting.
It is. It is exciting to move the work forward. The next item on my list is the Finance Report. We are about 46%. We have 46% left of the year, 54% completed. Right now, what we're doing in my office is we're running projections for the end of the year for each of the articles. The projections are primarily in the area of salaries and insurance. Those are numbers that we can rely on pretty well. We pay, I think most of us know, we have a 26 payroll cycle, and insurance is a 12-month cycle. And so we can forecast now what we believe we will need by the end of the year. The only caveat that I would add to that is the last payroll in June is a big one. It's roughly three times the payrolls for all of the other, for each annual 26. So that one's a little harder to forecast, but we're going through and trying to project what we think will be left for each of those articles. I want to share with you that in the school district revenue, and it's a correspondence reduction in Article 11, we have a fairly sizable payment that we made to the state of Maine for the high school bond, and that's still showing up here. So it overstates our finances considerably. So as you're looking down through, that payment has been made, and so it just hasn't been taken out of our finances yet. Going back to our expenditures, expenditures are in good shape. We're watching the oil lines pretty carefully. This is the town of year where we tend to use a lot of oil. The grade school in particular, because of its age and condition, tends to use more than we might like it to. So we watch that pretty carefully. The weather has quite honestly been a help to us. It's been warmer lately, and that's been an asset to the school department. The lines are in good shape. We will talk a little bit later in the agenda about the need to purchase a school district truck. The maintenance truck for the grade school did not pass inspection last fall. We bid that item twice, and working with the Andersgagen Bank, we structured a payment that would begin in July, which will allow us to budget for that in the 2021 budget cycle. But everything else is in really good shape. I entertain any questions around finances? Okay. Rolling along to enrollment, we are a couple of kids over where we were this time last month, but we're 14 kids down from where we were this time last year. Those 14 kids, I believe, as Mrs. Shumway pointed out in the last agenda, are not in any one particular grade, but given the size of the district, sometimes one or two families moving in, moving out can have a substantial impact. Just as the school committee begins to think about its budget development for 2021, enrollment's a big factor. We are funded based on the number of students that we have, along with valuation and some other things, but student count is pretty important to us, so we watch those numbers carefully. And then I also included in your packet a couple of pieces of correspondence from the state of Maine Department of Education regarding the audit. The first was an extension that I had requested after discussion with RKO, which is Runa Kristi and Milet, our auditors through January 15. Since that time, the town has had some personnel challenges, and the audit will not be ready until the 15th and will be presented to the school committee on the 5th. So I requested a second audit extension through the 28th of February. Jennifer, will we hear from RKO, Agent, in February for your business meeting to do the audit presentation? So that includes that, and that concludes my remarks. Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Brown. Now for the Chair Report. I'd like to just do a quick update on our superintendent of school search. The dates for the applications will close on the 10th, this Friday. We'll have a meeting on the 13th for the Screening Committee, and we'll have interviews, and some of that depends on your schedule, Janet. We have to decide either the 22nd or the 23rd. Whatever is best for you. We have maybe eight or nine applicants. What number are we at? Nine applicants as of yesterday. An update on the catchy meeting that we had December 9. There's not a real lot to report, except for that the program is expected to run in deficit by $200,000. And the co-op agreement that exists that we've all signed doesn't address that deficit cost sharing, so they're working on that, and we can expect something back. I don't know when they're going to go on that. But they know they have it to face. The next meeting will be the 10th, this Friday, where they will start to discuss for the first time the shared calendar. I wanted to discuss the email correspondence that I had with Senator Bellows, as you know, and was reported out at our last business meeting. Dr. Brown, Ms. Shumway, and I went in and had a meeting with Senator Bellows and several others regarding the food nutrition debt that we're going into because lunches are not being paid for as regularly as they used to be. We're presently at a $4,000 deficit. And after the meeting and upon finding that our deficit had gone up to $4,000, I wrote an email to Dr., I mean, to Senator Bellows to inform her that the problem was worse than we initially thought it was. So I think she's going to work on that. Vice Chair Schuman had a... I have written here, Shumway, too. It's all about learning how to read. So sorry. Vice Chair Shumway would like to report out on a conversation that she had on the same topic with Representative Hickman.
Thank you. Again, on the 12th of December, I believe it was, I spoke with Craig Hickman because after speaking with Senator Bellows, she had indicated that Craig Hickman works closely on committees that have to do with ending hunger in Maine. And so that this was something that, this issue that we're finding, it seems that there's an unintended consequence of the law that was passed to provide school lunch to all students regardless if they pay for those lunches or not. And we determined in conversation with Walter Beasley at that meeting with Senator Bellows that perhaps an unintended consequence of increasing our minimum wage was that it was taking families that were free and reduced and pushing them over that federal threshold because the school nutrition standards are based at the federal level and our minimum wage is based at the state level. So I'm mentioning that to Craig Hickman. He had indicated that he was going to get in touch with our representatives at the federal level and make them aware of this issue because, as a result, and the trickle-down effect is, is that we have a school nutrition program that we need to make solvent, and it's floundering in a sense because of all of these bills that are being passed and people either not being able to pay because they either didn't have to pay for school lunch last year and now are finding that they are needing to, or they paid last year reduced and now they are not, they are having to pay the full price. So we talked about that a little bit, and then talked about some initiatives that perhaps he could look into based on the, with him being involved in the Hunger in Maine Committee and looking for different ways to make sure that our students are eating, but not having the financial restrictions or deficit that the schools are experiencing right now. So a lot of different ideas, but nothing, nothing in particular that probably will move forward prior to his term being up, unfortunately.
No quick solutions.
No.
Thank you. Standing Committee Reports. Finance.
Jenny and I got together a couple of lines. And something for this episode. We did warrant 5, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. School nutrition warrants 6, 8, and 9. Payroll warrants 9A, 9B, 9C, 10, 10A, 11, 11A, 11B, 11C, 11D, 12, 13, and 13A. And I did email these to Colleen, so she has them.
Oh, so she's not very crazy. And there's been no, there was no Policy Committee meeting before our business meeting tonight, so there's nothing to report on there. And negotiations?
The Negotiations Committee had a mediation meeting today with the Administrators Unit, and that is ongoing. We have another one scheduled for February 6. Is it the 6th? That's right. Yep.
And it seems like you're way over work, but how would you like to report on the ad hoc committee homework?
The Curriculum Committee met on December 10, and we are currently conducting a book study, and we discussed the chapters, and we'll meet again, Mr. Shea, how many?
16.
We'll meet January 16 and continue with the next two chapters in the coming.
So we're going with the Curriculum Committee, not the homework committee?
Yes, because we're reviewing all curriculum-related policies. We just happen to be focusing on homework right now.
Oh, so that's going to be a long, almost standing ad hoc meeting. Okay. I'm going to start the year off right. I am not going to overlook or forget the Administrator Open Form, Mr. Lab.
Yeah, be good, Karen. I have lots of my papers. We have to go way back to December 11. On the 11th, we had our first concert of the year, fourth-grade recorders, fifth-grade band, and four or five chorus. There were probably close to 125 student performers that night, and well over 500 in the audience. It was standing room only in our challenging little facility, but we all had a good time. The kids did a great job. They loved the opportunity to be able to perform, and the parents are very pleased to show up. On the 12th, we had the Winthrop-area handbell ringers come in and do a concert for all of our students, which went very well. Meg Cook is a member of that, Kathy Elbridge, a few other well-known faces. They were kind enough to come in and do that for our kids. On the 18th, K-1, 2 classes went to a holiday performance at Kent Hill School. On the 19th, the kindergarten classes visited the North Pole on the Polar Express. They always enjoy doing that. It's become kind of an annual thing that they do with the cocoa and the popcorn and the bells in the movie. So they get together and switch classes for various activities across their areas. On the 20th, we completed the Alice training scenarios. So at this point, all of our direct care staff have completed Alice training. Do you want me to, I can talk about Alice right now. So where we stand at this point, we, I hope, are going to meet as a training team next Wednesday and do a debrief in terms of how the training went in each of the three buildings. We have three teams, one in each building. And then from there, we will begin to discuss how we're going to roll this out in terms of training for students and also information for parents. We have access now to a parent portal, which you will be able to access as well. When we get ready to roll that out, it'll be a link on our website so that parents can log in, or any community member can log in and see a basic overview of what the Alice approach to this type of event is. So that will be our next steps. And then following that, we will need to be looking at a School Board policy that supports the Alice approach. And once that's been completed, we'll be eligible for certification as a district for Alice. So we made tremendous progress in a pretty short period of time last August when we got together up in Bangor. I kind of wondered, like, oh, boy, this is a big task we have ahead of us. But the people that went through the training and have been doing this have done a nice little job. It has been very well received by staff. It's a very thoughtful thing to engage in, but they've taken it seriously and had some fun at the same time as we approached this topic and are prepared to do that. And the last thing is, we installed five short throw projectors over the holidays. Do you even have that on your list?
Thank you.
We copy our feature. And those were installed. We have art room, music room, which are two areas that are used for 450 kids a week go through those classrooms. So that is a lot of use there. And then we started at the fifth grade level and am hoping in future years to move down through fourth and third as we're able to install a short throw projector and interactive whiteboards.
Super. Thank you. And congratulations on that Alice training. I know that that was something that was a really large goal for you, and you made it happen. Chef Erin, do you have anything to report out today?
Just a little bit. You did steal a good part of my thunder because I was going to mention the negative balances. It's up to $4,200 now as of Monday, and it's something that has taken up a lot of my time and my manager's time. Previously, managers in each building mailed out negative balance letters, but it has become a job that is too big for the managers to take time, and so I've taken it off their shoulders and onto mine. And it's actually kind of gotten too big for me, too. So we've been brainstorming with ways that we can get those letters out to families in a timely manner and hopefully get responses from them. I've decided to only mail out letters when the balance is over $100. So it just cuts down, I think, sending out a letter for someone that owes $14 is kind of a waste of time and a stamp and everything. So I've been spending a lot of time in that and hopefully not much further after that. We are hiring a line server at the grade school. We've been looking for someone since right after Thanksgiving. Grade School Lunchroom is very, very busy, and we're hoping to add a third person to our staff there soon. I'm interviewing someone this week, so I have high hopes of getting another new face in there to help the children with their, get their food in a timely manner. And the last thing I have is the Main Harvest of the Month Program. I'm continuing on with that. It's a program that I'm really excited about. In December, we served winter squash with our holiday meal. It was well received by the kids. And January is Potato Month, and we're looking for a local farm to sell us some potatoes because that's the biggest challenge in the winter month is to find farmers that are still open for business and selling produce. And we're going to move on through the whole school year. It's a really exciting program. The kids seem to love it, and hopefully it will bring some knowledge to the kids about what we grow in Maine and what we can eat from our local grown produce. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Chris?
At the middle school, over vacation, the main office was carpeted. As you remember, my office and Mr. Shea's office were carpeted the week before school started, and we didn't have time to finish the project. And so that was completed over vacation, and it looks fabulous. I'd like to commend the high school student council with Danielle Dusette with the Giving Tree. They included the middle school as always, and it's just a huge success. It makes the kids feel good, and it makes us feel good, giving back to the community. The middle school student council also held a food drive with competition between connections groups, and Mrs. Gilman's group did win the pizza party for bringing in the most number, the highest number of non-perishable items that were then delivered to the food pantry. Trimester one concluded just after Thanksgiving. 31% of the Winthrop Middle School students made high honors. 41% made honors, for a total of 72% of the student body was on the honor roll. And if you saw it in the newspaper, it was very impressive. We were right next to the high school, and we need to work on our format so that we're a little more consistent with that. Badminton Tournament is starting next week. We've got a little bit of a different process to do it. We have students and staff, both on teams. I personally can't wait. And we had four of the short throw projectors with the interactive whiteboards installed over vacation. And that, all of my academic classes now have a short throw, a smart board, or a Promethean board in them, and the art room is also included in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
So at the high school. December Student Month was Samantha Allen. Samantha was recognized by the staff for her hard work and dedication in the classroom. If you know Sam, you know that she is just an all-around super person. She is the daughter of Todd and Jennifer Allen. Next Thursday, cordially invited at our town meeting, it's about 9:00 in the morning. It occurs, it's during a rotating block two. I invited, and she's accepted, Dr., excuse me, DA Megan Maloney to come in and address the student body on posting... to come in and address the student body on posting on websites, social media sites, to discuss the, the line between freedom of speech and other areas they may find themselves in legal trouble. So that's next Thursday about nine o'clock. I thought Josh was gonna be here tonight. I think Josh is hot working hard at the high school on the drama production, which is this Friday, Saturday at seven PM. The drama committee is doing voices in the high school under the direction of Ms. Alexis Staskulina. He's gonna report on that, but I don't want you to miss it. The other thing is I have a handout. I gotta upstairs. So I've talked about some goals that we've been working on at the high school, the teachers, administration. And the first one, first two actually focus on us getting a common idea of what we want from our students before they leave for high school. So September, October, November, we discussed that thoroughly. And on the second page, you will see what we came up with as what we feel every student, regardless of whether they're going to Great Work or headed off to college or the military, should have for skills, both academic and social skills. Starting this Thursday, tomorrow, during advisory, we're gonna be working with individual classes on where they feel, where we feel they're at to help them move forward. The third page is what we're gonna be doing with freshmen. We're gonna have them reflect on how their school year's been going, what they need to work on between now and the end of the quarter, which is January 24th. For most of them, it's been a smooth transition to the high school. But we have a few that are struggling, so we're hoping that this time of reflection and maybe some conversations with their advisor will help them turn things around a bit. And for our freshmen, it'll be the first time that they take midterms. They're gonna have midterms in math and they're gonna have midterms in science. So how to prepare for those. So that's how it goes with freshmen tomorrow. Sophomores that are going through the ASVAB. They took the ASVAB back in November. They're getting their results. Juniors meeting with me and the auditorium. We're going over the PSA P scores. And seniors, they're here from a panel of graduates from Winthrop High School who are either in their first or second year of college to hear what that's about. That's what we're doing tomorrow. Questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lemuel? Is she there? I can see her.
Happy New Year. I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, well, I would normally call on Mr. Courier, but is that gonna be a portion of your presentation? Your introduction of him? Okay. And then, the most important of them all, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, but I have nothing to report today.
And we know Mr. Stoneton's at the big game. Would you like to introduce then our Northeast Charter first? Sure.
The floor is yours. Come on forward, sir.
Thank you. I'm Scott Rieckel from Northeast Charter Bus. And you know Al Courier and you know Larry Allen, so.
I don't, I don't know if everyone does know Al.
Al, Al was the driver at Northeast many moons ago and has been a driver and the assistant to David here at Winthrop for quite some time. Larry's the assistant GM for the big operation of the companies. So we are a company of about a hundred employees, three divisions, and Winthrop is one of ours. And it's been here since 2011. So these are the real worker bees in the system. They just tell me where I need to go, what I need to do. So the work gets done, you can thank these guys because they're making it happen daily, so we appreciate it. We've been here since 2011 and very happy to say that's been a great ride for us. It's amazing when I did look back that it's been since 2011. David gave notice about a month ago and decided to take on some new opportunities. Al has been his assistant for quite some time. And Larry has been up working with Al, just making sure the transition was smooth. And I know Al's a familiar face to a lot of you on a regular basis. So very happy to report that Al has taken over that position as the manager of Winthrop Middle School. So all going well there. He hears me a little more frequently, but we're okay with that, so it's not a bad thing. But Al's been a great asset and he was a driver for us many moons ago, as well as a part-time driver. So we've, we've got a lot of history with that, really, at the moment. So Larry's gonna get into the new Department of Education requirements in a minute that has to do with training and new rules for drivers and staff. So Larry's gonna talk about that in a minute. I wanted to let you know that we are still running a GPS tracking program in all of your school buses. So at any point in time, whether it's on your phone or your computer, it can tell you where those vehicles are. We can look at a lot of different reports on those vehicles, like idle and speed and who's driving it and the actual location of them. As long as we have a cell phone signal, which we all know at certain parts of state of Maine that doesn't work, but it does come back around eventually. So if you're going to the forks, it stops about Scout Beacon and it comes back around Jackman. So there's a bit of a gap there, but we can, we can work with that. So in September, we continued one of our two annual main state police inspections. They come around on a regular basis, do their own inspections. These are on top of the inspections that we're required to do twice a year privately. We use a third party enlistment to inspect all sixty-two of the vehicles that Northeast Charter either owns or operates. So state police comes in every September. They reported back that all vehicles are doing well. There are a few vehicles that are aging. We do have a little bit of an older fleet, but everything is in good, good working order and we're maintaining them down in the Lewiston Garage as well as up here. So we were happy to see the state police inspectors there. They call and tell you when they're coming and that's how that goes. So we're okay with that. It's been that way for quite some time. They get to know us, we get to know them, and it, and it works out well. We see a few districts every once in a while in the news about school buses. Our goal is not to be one of those companies. So we're happy to say that that doesn't happen. So we go through all of our vehicles prior, uh, before any inspections are gonna happen. Just it helps us out from the expense side because if they find something wrong, they're gonna pull it out of service and that can be expensive. So we just finished our semi-annual driver and staff reviews. Larry and Al did those with all the drivers and staff, so drivers receive raises. We are a competitive company with some of the other districts in the area. You'll notice there are districts offering sign-on bonuses, things of that nature, but we're, we're happy to say that we're happy with the staff that we have. We have a few new candidates that have just come on as well. People come and go, just as, as it is in the workforce. But you've never had anyone stranded or a driver that couldn't be there on a regular basis. We have had some dips in, in people moving on because of some of those incentives, but we're happy to report we have ways to work around those and make sure the kids get to school every day on a regular basis. So happy with the way that that's going and the drivers were all happy with their mid-session raises as well. So we continue to get back in the community and participate with the boosters, the event that you do, the golf event that you do. So we're always happy to do that. And also in 2019, Northeast Charter, Northeast Charter School Bus was recognized as one of the best places to work in Maine. So that's the first time since that program has been running in the state of Maine, which is fourteen years. It's the first time either a charter bus or a school bus company in the state of Maine was recognized as one of the best places to work. So we're pretty excited to hear that and we're even more excited to learn that we're thirty-six out of a hundred on the mid-sized companies. So, so we were really excited to hear about that. So yeah, thank you. That was a big honor. And that's all an employee-driven feedback program that, you know, if you do well, you do well. If you don't, you don't. It just depends on what the employees have to say. So we're very excited to see that and recognize that as a great honor. So Larry's gonna talk about some of the transportation training that's set forth in the new rules effective February of 2020 by the Maine DOE. We started our training program, building that program back around the end of the summer. And Larry's gonna get into some of the specifics.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest change, the most noticeable change is the difference in the number of hours that drivers are required to be trained. Some type of training, a new component where there has to be additional annual behind-the-wheel training. So we are the only transportation company that has a full-time driver trainer on staff. So we've been working on a curriculum for them. So basically, uh, setting up courses and plans to take each of the drivers out individually and run them through, just like if you were gonna go take your driving test again. If you've been having to do that every year, that's, that's a new component of this program. So it's not a bad thing. We talk about skills and approaching turns and how to operate in congested areas in the parking lots and things along those lines. Anything we can do to sharpen their skills, that's, that's kind of the gist of it. So the biggest thing that we're working through trying to overcome is the, is the difference in the number of required hours. Originally, it was, it was ten hours per driver, per year. Now it's sixteen hours per driver, per year. You know, plenty of mathematicians in the house. It was a sixty percent bump in, in other than driving revenue generating work. So we're, we're working through finalizing our plans and how that's all gonna pan out. But it hasn't fallen off the radar, certainly stuff. There's an additional component, a little, a bit more in-depth, student, student bus safety training where the honest is either on the transportation provider or the district to make sure that we have a bit more intensive training with the students, anybody that could ride a, a bus. And so imagine, well, you know what it's like trying to get eight hundred and fifty people in front of a little projector and then... So we developed three different age groups of school bus safety presentations. So it's, there's just a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes trying to get ourselves, you know, to present a proper and, you know, accurate and compliant school bus safety program on the island. Those are the things that we're, we're working on behind the scenes right now.
And we have been talking to Dr. Brown since probably around September, October about this coming down the pike because there is quite a bit of expense involved in building such a curriculum. So, but it is a DOE Chapter eighty-one requirement that's effective next March. So we jumped on it in September to try and, uh, August, September to try and start building it and see what goes.
Do each of you have to have your curriculum approved by the DOE?
Actually, no, there isn't a specific, no. They just, they, they said, it's, it's kind of funny, yeah. So they, they set an hours requirement and there are, there are certain components that have to be part of. And so we're using our, you know, based on all of our transportation knowledge, a, a, what we feel would be a best practice percentages. I mean, all of the different safety trainings that the drivers have to go through, just like your in-service trainings. It's all the same type of things, but the, the driving component and more behind-the-wheel safety and then specifically the bus safety stuff is where the, the extra hours are coming.
A lot of people that need to be affected in comparison, so our full-time driver trainer, if he's training a motor coach operator, the driver comes in with experience. It's about sixty hours of our program before we will let them loose to drive on their own. If you're coming in from the ground up and we're gonna train you to get your license, it's more like a hundred to a hundred and twenty for us. So it just, it just depends on the skill set and how well you adapt and how comfortable the trainer feels. And so we're, our driver trainer is helping. David did a big piece of this back in the summer in September and got things started and then we're building it from there. But there is, there is a bit of an expense that's gonna have to be spread out and recognized. Chapter eighty-one DOE. That's all we have to report. Unless you have any questions for us, we're happy to entertain.
I would tell you, I'm glad to be here at Winthrop. I've been here for four years now. I have two daughters who are special needs teachers, both in different states. And they've asked me, Dad, will you please stop bragging about the teachers in Winthrop? I think they're wonderful.
Thank you. So we want to thank you for taking on this awesome responsibility and welcoming the board.
I'm enjoying it. With their help and the three schools, I've had the help that I needed.
And Scott, congratulations to your organization. We've always found it to be a pop-up shop organization as well. We also appreciate and thank you for all the donations that you do, that you give to our students.
We enjoy being here, so it's a great, great community to be involved in this one.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll turn to Mr. McArthur's Technology Education Class Presentation.
So while he's firing up, can I just share a little something? So Dr. Brown came to me, I don't know, early December and said, can you do, what are your classes to do a presentation for? Without even hesitating, I said, absolutely. And then I went to Mr. McArthur and said, do you have a game on January eighth? So Mr. McArthur's class is one of the most sought-after electives at the high school. And I immediately thought of his program, but it's quickly evolved into involving, involved in our second most sought-after elective, and that's video production. So as you see, these gentlemen are going to talk about their table they've designed and built through a video production. Mr. McArthur.
Now, Mr. McArthur, is this table being given away this evening?
Would you like it? You seem to be the bullet of education. I will say this though before I get going. Well, I could do that. A little blast from the past, Mrs. Chris reporting about badminton tournaments. Do you remember? The duo right there, yes. All right, so anyway, we'll get going because we got a little short video. And before I begin, I just wanna give a huge shout-out to Ms. Shaw, her program. She wears multiple hats at the high school and she's able to run two magnificent programs. And that's hard to do wearing two hats. So we were, we were able to utilize some of her students without her, you know, really being engaged in them because she's taught them so well that they can go off and fly on their own. So I just wanted to give a huge shout-out to her and these boys absolutely have learned a tremendous amount in her program and able to help us capture what we're trying to capture through our, our project. So anyway, for anybody that doesn't know, my name is Todd McArthur. I am the technology education teacher. This is now my fourteenth year as educator in here at Winthrop High School. You blink your eyes and time just goes. So I offer multiple classes and one of the classes that I, that these boys have taken is furniture construction. It's an advanced woodworking class where they have some freedom. The curriculum is kind of, they get to, you kind of pick what they wanna do. And, but the biggest thing they have to do is utilize some of the skills that they have obtained in, you know, beginning woodworking classes. And, but the biggest thing is they have to, you know, go away with a piece of furniture. And a lot of, and a lot of kids utilize, you know, you know, for coffee tables, chairs, nightstands. And these guys kind of pushed the boundaries this year and produced some really cool projects. They were able to create their own coffee table with the use of river, the epoxy to do river tables. And there was two of them that we kind of had a little competition. I never shared the results with them because I rigged it and wasn't gonna tell them anymore. But it was really, I was really proud to be their teacher. And they had taken what I had given them and they flew with it and they just blew my mind. And I thought they did a tremendous job. And so we wanted to do something because they finished early and there's still, you know, three weeks left in the class. And so we did a group project. And I'm not gonna talk about what was assigned to them. I'm gonna introduce to you the boys and then they're gonna talk about what they did. So without further ado, first off, I just wanna thank the school committee for taking the time and letting these guys be recognized because they definitely deserve that. So thank you very much. What we have right here is Ryan Berg, Owen Foster, Cody Perkins, Nate Wood, and Jevon Smith. So, and I'm glad that Ryan came. My deer just hit him on his way here, so he's safe and sound, but he's good to go. So he made it, so I, I commend him for being committed. And we had one student that was in school today that was part of this project and he wasn't able to attend. But Jevon Smith is gonna report on the assignment that I gave them. And then we have a short video that we'll play and then we'll wrap things up. So Jevon, the floor is yours.
McArthur came to me and Owen about a month ago with the idea of creating a group project. And it wasn't really guidelines, so we thought, why not use it in epoxy? We had a competition prior this year and I won. So over the past month or so, we made this nice table right here and we videoed every step of the way so we could show you guys and we're all gonna explain what we did in this video.
So without further ado, um, do we want to turn the lights off or do we just let it go? Kind of style-voice theme because that's what's going on right now.
So we started out by making the lights to this table. And I'll talk to you about the equipment we actually measured, like how long lights big. We use this to see what the size of the wood's gonna be square. And we use the top side to set the lights to the red lights that we want. And we use the top side of the lights to the red lights that we want. This is a plain cardboard.
Why bother stacking steel?
Basically, they have others to create a kind of like river off of the river. It's pretty hard to control, but it's pretty valuable.
Make sure you elaborate on the next part.
So, this is the epoxy that's, huh? Two parts of epoxy, it's parting and the main epoxy. We have to take five minutes to, we have to form together and then take five minutes. It's the best part. We put a covering in. Not the product thing, it's gonna hard until it's good video. And then, we have to go four in here. Yeah. This is the most satisfying part. Now, we're making a frame, so when we pour the main river, it doesn't leak out and get all over the place.
Why is the door down?
Door doesn't stick to the roof. Now, we're getting ready for our final four. Adding some of the thick concrete in.
For me, next part, your favorite part, you can elaborate on the next part.
So, the torch, you run it over the top of your epoxy and it gets all the air bubbles out. It gives you that nice clean, clear finish. Basically, the last step that really cleans it up and makes it look, gives it that nice feel.
And we added the aquarium rock in the bottom. So, that helps fill the space instead of using more epoxy. It fills up some volume, so I was very able to use less epoxy. And we tried something differently inside the floor. Well, we changed it to watch. Twenty-five miles, it's a really smooth. Yeah, really smooth. And you'll see what they did in the end. You can get like a near finish if you, you know, hollow it. So, and I commend these guys for the project. It's free week, this right here was their invitation. So, we came in, these boys came in on their own free time to finish up the project. So, that says a lot about what they commend me for. So, just to wrap things up, and if you have any questions, you can ask them. But I just, you know, a lot of times we hear about, you know, the negativity of kids nowadays and all that, but there's a lot of positive things going on in schools and for all students. And it's a blessing for as an educator to be able to recognize kids in a positive manner. So, I just want to thank everybody and just make sure that we take an opportunity to, you know, just to commend these guys on a great job that they did. So, thank you, guys, and I really thank you.
We haven't determined that yet. I'm sure that'll be a fighting class.
I think Jevon deserves it.
Don't you think I could come play a badminton game for that table? Don't you think I could come play a badminton game for that table?
No, because you win.
Well, if you spot me, ten points.
I see you play that, not in ten years, but...
Yeah, but that was ten years ago.
Well, that was a really super presentation. Thanks for making that. You're welcome. That was great. Continuing on along new business, I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the award of the pickup truck bid.
So moved. Second.
Is there any public comment to inform the school committee's vote? Seeing none. Madam Superintendent, would you like to expand, expand, expound? There you go.
I'll try to keep my remarks short. The memo was in your packet. We had to rebid the truck. And we received three bids. I detailed what they were. They were provided pursuant to a bid spec that we sent out in November, probably. We had to send it out twice. And basically, bidders had to provide sealed bids and conform to a list of criteria, which they did. Any of the bidders, I think, would have been an excellent choice for the school district. Recommend awarded the truck to Quirk for the following reasons. The, one of the bidders did not bid the dumpster, which is something that we need. Another bidder said that it would not be available to us for ten weeks. And as you heard earlier in my remarks, we really need the truck now. The grade school's been without a truck. It is winter and we do need to plow. So, that's something that we need as soon as possible. And the price, so for what we'd asked and specked, they didn't have the best price. I meet with Mr. Semple from Manchester Bank, assuming this school committee votes to allow us to purchase this and the truck should be here the week after next.
Is there any further questions or discussions for the superintendent? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes five zero. I'll entertain the motion to accept the donation of $2,000 from the Lions Club to support the athletic program at Winthrop High School.
So moved. Second.
Is there any public comment to inform the school board's decision-making on this motion? Seeing none. Is there any discussion?
Is it, is this to support all athletic programs or for a specific program? It's my understanding it is for the high school athletic department, so that would be for all of them.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. And a big thank you.
Yes.
Who's in charge of writing the big thank you?
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay. Public comment. Before we go into public comment, I just would like to draw all of our public commenters attention to the print, the last part of the agenda that's in font two, which says that individuals have three minutes with their comments unless you have a spokesperson for your organization, in which case that spokesperson gets five minutes. If there are going to be individual speakers, we ask that each individual speaker bring up something new. And, you know, a new point from the previous speakers. And we, we won't go any longer than twenty minutes. So, public comment, please. Mr. Swanson.
I'm a member of the Historical Society in town. And I'd like to ask Joe, did you graduate from UMO in sixty-nine?
I did.
Okay. There's a picture of Joe back in seventy-one. And I just want to read what it says under it. He's been elected to teach English at Winthrop High School. He graduated from UMO in sixty-nine, has been a political science economics instructor at Rockland District High School, also speech instructor at UMO. He is chairman of the Governor's Youth Task Force and a member of Main Speech Association. He's married and has a six-month-old son. And the family will make their home in Squire Hill Trailer Park.
So, when Mr. Swanson threatened you, you wouldn't pay him, huh?
No, but I would like to add that that six-month-old son is now forty-nine today.
Which one is that? Additional public comment.
I would like to make a comment, a public.
May I? Would you please tell the recorder your name?
Oh, yes. Portia Hardy, P-O-R-T-I-A, Hardy, H-A-R-D-Y. That's my name. I would like to ask that Mr. Shaler gets a spot on the agenda to discuss the Latin courses at Winthrop High School. I guess I will speak. I am, I have an essay written by a current student, Erica Taylor, who is not able to be here. I'm gonna read it out loud. Do you mind if I use the podium?
Please do.
Thank you. I know this is on, oh, it is. All right. So, as Erica is saying, when I began Latin I, my freshman year of high school, I was skeptical of my abilities not only to learn, but to apply the new information given to me in my real life. It was hard, no doubt. It still is. But now, a junior in high school, I am able to look back on my two-and-a-half years of Latin with a great sense of pride. Not only did I learn to read, translate, and comprehend the ancient language, but I also learned of the people that spoke it and how they and other ancient civilizations and their leadership in the future of the world that we now live in. In learning Latin vocabulary, I've been able to increase my own English vocabulary, words that are used in law, medicine, and even the SAT test. I have a library of information in my own brain, the founding of Rome, ancient Roman politics, end way of life, mythology, and the occasional Christ Greek lessons. Though it is no longer a spoken language, Latin remains one of the most influential languages in history. It is important that future students of Winthrop High School be given the same opportunity to widely increase their knowledge on the ancient world and even English, which, from personal experience, I can say is a lot more complex than I could ever imagine. Cutting Latin from Winthrop High School's foreign language program would do a great disservice to the young minds that remain untouched by the language and ancient cultures that could potentially connect the dots on how the world came to become in their minds and also provide them with a cool party trick. What is the plural of octopus? Octopi? No, it's actually octopodes. Most sincerely, Erica. And then, I would also like to speak for myself as a graduate of Winthrop High School. I graduated in twenty-eighteen and I now attend Farmington. So, I have a little bulleted list of what Latin gave me. It gave me a chance to gain leadership opportunities, not only in the club because the class is attached to a Latin club, which has officers for the old regional high school and as well as the state of Maine. I was an officer on the state level, which gave me more confidence, more interpersonal skills, which are very transferable into college as well in the call of resume. It's very important to add those things. It's good for college studies as well. There are conventions that the club allows you to attend, which allows for students to feel more connected to a larger community. It gives them a sense of who they are and it allows for more personal growth. Being a part of a national organization is also a very nice little tidbit to add on any resume. If you're a part of the club or if you are a part of the class, you get organizational skills from learning how to organize old ancient language into a modern English language. And you also get to organize events. Personally, Latin was one of my favorite memories from Winthrop High School. I learned a lot. I gained lots of friends from there. I became more confident and better at speaking, so ta-da, ta-da. Yes. All in all, I would like to say it was great. And Mr. Shaler is a wonderful, awesome teacher. And I think students would benefit from teaching his classes, especially Latin. Thank you.
Thank you. Well spoken. Others?
I would like to make a little comment.
I'm sorry, being the oldest member up here, I'm hardly deaf. And I would really appreciate it if you could, I'm gonna identify yourself. Would you please identify yourself?
My name is Adam Hardy and I'm a student at Winthrop High School. I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of a former graduate. His name is Mike McGuire, and he wrote this to support. I'm ready to share how learning Latin has impacted my experiences at Brown University during my first semester. I know that some believe it is that it is a dead language and does not deserve to be learned today any longer. However, tools that I possess by having learned Latin are serving me well today by accenting my vocabulary and my ability to think critically. One of the most obvious ways that this has helped me has been in neuroscience. The class has been a reputation or has a reputation for being one of the most difficult introductory courses at Brown. The Latin vocabulary that I gained carried over into the complex anatomy of the brain, allowing me to make more connections and has strengthened my learning of neuroscience. I did well in that course in part because of my knowledge of Latin that provided me a huge advantage. Latin is truly a puzzle that helped me develop cognitive processing that is required in Latin translation. Latin is unlike the known world word, order, we use to communicate in English. Subject, predicate, object. Latin words can be artistically scrambled. This results in a puzzle like poetry. Because of this, a Latin scholar may devise strategies to help unscramble extremely complex sentences in a second language. To add to the complexity, a verb in Latin has six tenses, two voices, and three moods. They are basically pubescent teens. And noun is one of five declensions. This noun has six cases and sometimes that noun can even become a verb. All of these structures work to create a brilliant puzzles that take time and a dedicated scholarly pursuit to solve, just like an organic chemistry problem. An initial query is given and the scholar is left with what they know to solve it. I had some great classes and many great opportunities at Winthrop High School. I argue that AP Latin is one of the best, most intellectually stimulating courses that I took in high school. It taught me how to study, how to struggle, and how to succeed. It provided me with a workload that was difficult but manageable. Mr. Shaler teaches this course with the rigor of a college course while providing the wisdom of a sage and the support of a very fine teacher that he is. Learning the language and the skills needed to translate Latin are truly assets that will help, that will last a lifetime. This class has played a significant role in my college career thus far and it will continue to play a role in my semesters. to play a role in my semesters to come and furthermore, in my career and in my lifetime. I could not be more appreciative of having this opportunity to take Latin and having Mr. Shaler who holds great knowledge of patience and passion for the language. I am sad that that future Winthrop students will not have the same opportunity to learn by taking Latin. I hope he can understand its immense value and allow the Latin program at Winthrop High School to return. My best, Maguire, and Subst.
Thank you. Well done. Okay, any, any additional speakers?
I'm Jennifer T. P. D., a parent of Camden who is an AP Latin class participant and is captain, or president of the Latin club, I guess you could say. And he asked me not to speak tonight, so I'll be really quick. And I know we're running long, but I just want to say that with Latin, I didn't take Latin myself and I really was like, what's all this Latin about? But I've seen how much he's grown being in Latin all four years with Mr. Shaler. And with Latin comes all the academic competitions and, you know, Winthrop is a great sports town and we have a great performing arts center and music. And I've really been happy with my twins' education all through high school, but I think if there's an area that we could improve on, it's actually academic pursuits among the art high school students. I know, I think we have a math club and maybe we have a robotics club or maybe we don't have any of those anymore, but we did have like the junior classic league and all the competition that comes with that. And I just have seen how much Camden has grown, how proud he is to be an academic, something that he wasn't when he was a freshman. You know, he thought being academic was kind of a curse, but I just think that he has really embraced his academic pursuits in large part because of all the success he's had in Latin and all the junior classic league and not to mention the wonderful trip that Mr. Shaler took all his students on to Rome and Pompeii and all of that last year. So I also would like some consideration about Latin being an option to incoming students to see how much interest there is because I know that was something that wasn't done with the freshman last year. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none. One more.
I don't have a prepared talk. My son, Rowan, um... Excuse me? Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Angela Goblebe, now a junior, Rowan. He asked me to come talk tonight. And he, he's one of those kids. One thing I want to say is that, you know, how we talk about learning differences in learning. He's one of those kids who really doesn't like mathematics very well, but he's a math science kid. And what he sees in Latin and what's really helped him enjoy Latin is, I'm sorry, I feel emotional for that first time. It's just the ability to look at Latin and see the formulas and the scientific structures and that really has helped him grow and actually learn to appreciate the humanities as well because they talk, they go to, they go to Rome, he didn't get to go, but, you know, they talk about like world history in class and all those things. And for, I think Latin is also a way that people can, you know, learn to connect the dots and really, and really like bring different types of academic fields together. And, you know, it's just a training ground, as Maguire was saying in his very eloquent letter. But one thing I also want to say is that we moved to Winthrop four years ago and we chose this town online because of the school district. And I think academics are so important and I feel like they're kind of slipping away here a little bit. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I could talk literally for hours on the importance and practicality of studying Latin. I, I won't.
But you have three minutes.
Very good response. I, I could drone on about enhanced SAT scores, provide testimonials from college admissions officials, or read quotes in the likes of Thomas Chestperson and Dr. Seuss. I could explain how it offers an educational experience and mental training completely distinct from that which one encounters when studying a spoken language. I could even talk about JCL and the vibrant community that surrounds the study of Latin, but you all know most of that already, especially after our testimony earlier. But all of you know that already. And the students and parents who took the time to come here tonight and speak have said more about the importance of studying Latin than I ever could. Instead, let's talk a bit about numbers. It's true, Latin at Winthrop used to have more students, but there's still a demand for it. In a recent survey of WHS on elective students want to see offer next year, Latin was the most frequent response. I have a document signed by thirteen, thirteen current ninth and tenth graders who would enroll in Latin I if it were reinstated next year, and there are certainly more whom I wasn't able to talk to. This does not include the rising eighth graders who form the bulk of any introductory language course at WHS. With those numbers, there might even be a need for two sections of Latin I. I'll move on from numbers of students who want to, who want Latin back to the number of sets reinstating Latin at WHS would cost the district: zero. I'm currently employed half-time as a lab teacher and half-time as a social studies teacher. Even with a course loaded three world history sections, my current number, and two Latin classes, next year's Latin III and AP, I could still fit two sections of Latin I into my schedule and continue to work half-time Latin and half-time social studies. You're already paying me to be in school all day, why not get the most bang for your buck? Numbers certainly have limitations. How do you get a meaningful number on the development of critical thinking skills and enhanced appreciation of literature for fun? I certainly can't quantify what Latin has meant and done for the students and parents who poured here tonight as well as those who have submitted written statements. But even if I can't put a number on what Latin means for our students in our community, I can confidently say that it is well worth more than it is to pay me to teach here.
Thank you, Mr. Shaler. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll entertain the motion to go into executive session.
I am going to enter into executive session regarding negotiations pursuant to one MRSA four oh five sixteen.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, everyone.